I know, I know.
Oh, you're talking about blondes? Well, he likes them. I thought Tim was there.
No, I'm... I know everybody.
I was retired. Then I'm looking at the room. There you go.
Yeah, that's what I did.
I was planning to record that thing down here. So I said, "What you mean?"
Right, exactly.
He's standing off. Oh, these are all staying down.
I just want y'all to know y'all getting your bag back since I've been there for eighteen hours.
Well, I see, I saw her. She got her little bag.
I just got the black one. I've got my own. I didn't say.
She would wash her people.
Don't take it.
She gotta wash her clothes.
She can do it like I'm not seeing. You remember we said my business.
No, we didn't say that. We didn't say that. Don't tell the story on me.
I can't stand it.
I don't think this is gonna work.
So, so now you're ready to tell the story on me?
I guess I'm sitting here, but that means I gotta sit here right there. Is it recording? Ms. Kitchen's wife? It is recorded, ain't it?
Yeah, he just dropped the ball.
He got mad because of that.
I don't see that.
That's his fault. You're welcome. Now, what's up? Johnny come lately. Admit what I said.
Just do a copy, go to the gym. We ran out. We're, we're, we're getting some more.
I guess it's not without me because that would be pretty shit for...
Huh?
I said, just, I guess it's not without me because I'm gonna have to stop for like ten hours. I'll be, I'll be, you know.
You gonna make some more coffee?
Yep.
So, Kevin, I just got something from my room. I got something from my room. I got it. Yeah. Yeah.
I'm gonna spread it.
Are we supposed to have something on the up here for side show?
I was gonna put it in there.
You ready? You ready? You ready?
I don't see where I'm ready.
Board of Education, School District, City of Muskegon Heights, Michigan. We officially called a special board meeting to order at six oh nine PM. Ms. Rankin, call the roll, please.
Uh, Scott?
Present.
Darnell, she's absent. Selman?
Present.
Rankin here. Cook absent. And Glover?
Present.
And... Johnson Pierce.
Here. At this time, I'm going to ask and do a roll call of PSA board members to see who's present. President Kitchen Slater?
Present.
Vice President Joseph Warren?
Present.
Marquise Childers III. Mr. David Fox. Mister, Ms. Antoinette Moore. Let the ref... Let the rec... Robinson, I'm sorry. Let the record reflect that Ms. Robinson, Mr. Childers, and Mr. Fox is not present. At this time, we're gonna move right on into the meeting to address the concerns that we have facing our district right now. So, right now, we're going to review the concerns with Academy Board and New Paradigm for Education. So, on, last week, we sent out a letter to the Academy Board giving them specific instructions on what their responsibilities and roles were according to the Muskegon Heights Public School Board, us acting as the authorizers. And so, in your hearing, if you guys don't mind, just hear what the letter stated. Would that be okay? Because I know you all probably did not see the letter. But this is how the letter reads. It says, "Dear Academy System Board, we, the members of the Muskegon Heights Board of Education, are aware of many concerns that have been raised by members of your board and, and our diverse stakeholders amongst students, parents, employees, alumni, and residents of the district concerning the transition to a new management structure for the academy system. We are aware that some of the concerns were raised unnecessarily by rumors or assumptions which had no merit in fact. Some such staffing issues were inherit... inherited, resulted of a change in leadership, and an increase in expectations. Staffing matters continue to be aggravated by a tight labor mark... labor market resulting from the state and national teacher shortage. In light of the existing levels of concern and ongoing requests for our board to intervene, we wish to share with you and indeed all stakeholders our consensus on several overreaching principles and observations. The well-being and education of our students is our primary mission. All persons should be treated fairly with honesty and respect. Most of the concern raised by the academy system existed for years prior to now and stemmed from new expectations and requests from New Paradigm for Education, the management company. Academy System Board members and administration or board governors need help and time to grow into their roles. As public entities, all governing and administrative stakeholders should operate with a maximum leveled... level of integrity and transparency. The Board of Education and the Academy System Board should operate solely within their areas of authority. It is essential that the Academy System Board members learn their charter contract and the scope of their authority. It's in the best in... interest of our students that the new management team successfully accomplish what the academic... the Academy System Board hired them to do. Clean up the mismanagement and deteriorated learning environment that has existed for the past several years as we transition to a more effective model of leadership. We support them in that effort, but we require of them the same level of transparency, honesty, and integrity that we ask of our board and ourselves. It is vitally important the members of all boards conduct themselves within the parameters of their legal authority. Board members are empowered when they meet together with a quorum in a legal called meeting and their opinions or decisions can only carry weight when expressed as a single vote. Subject to the will of the board majority, outside those instances, board members have no additional rights or responsibilities above any other citizen. A board member's misuse or abuse of their office is a serious matter. Our board is committed to these overreaching principles above all else. Any near-term concerns or issues related to the management decision, staff contract, benefits, work hours, or day-to-day operations at the school that do not reflect the overreaching principles should be resolved at the system administration level through the normal channels established by the charter, academy system bylaws, and policies. We have fought extremely hard this last year to regain control of our district with the belief that together with our community stakeholders, we are more than capable of improving the educational options we offer our students without state intervention. We have every intention of proving that belief with the help of all of you. Conversely, we recognize the challenges of the academy system did not arise overnight, and there are no quick solutions. And despite our own frustration with communication challenges with New Paradigm for Education, options are limited. Due to timing and the structure that must remain in place until the district debt has been repaid. We will only be successful is we... if we stay united and support all stakeholders, management, faculty, and board, and our common goal. Academy System Board members who make it their primary agenda to focus as a board member to find opportunities to publicly discredit or sup... or support attempts by others to undermine your own leadership team are contributing to the dysfunction that erodes any confidence that the state has in our ability to improve our schools without their intervention. We certainly appreciate and encourage your diligence in asking tough questions and ensuring accountability. But, but we need you to lead by example and carry out your fiduciary duties with the professionalism and discretion expected of board members in any district. Your public comment and commitment to learning how to affect... effectively govern will either validate or disapprove our critics' claims. Any board member unable to understand our request should consider other opportunities for service. According... accordingly, a mandatory... So, the next part of the letter talks about us being here today. So, let me set some ground rules here. In the letter, we talked about treating everybody with dignity and respect. We talked about that. Everyone in this room is an adult. So, if I'm talking, or members of this board, or members of the PSA board is talking, we need to show each other some respect. We can do this. We're all adults. Everybody is passionate about this issue that we have facing us right now. And the only way that we're gonna get to a solution, like we stated in the letter, is by coming together. So, at this time, I'm going to... I'm going to give you guys a brief synopsis of what has taken place with the... First of all, let me go back. Let the record reflect that Ms. Robinson has arrived and Mr. Childs is here. So, we want to put that on record that those members of the PSA board are here. So, let's take a trip back down memory lane. Let's talk about where we started from to where we're at now. So, as you all know, Muskegon Heights is very unique right now, and we didn't get this way overnight. Back in 2012, the state declared a financial emergency in this, in this school district. And so, they came in, and at that particular time, they sent an emergency manager to get things in order, right? After the EM left, then they sent the receivership transitionary board. The transitionary board exited because the, this district board had got our house in order as far as finances go, right? And at that time, we were giving back some powers to act as true authorizers. In order for this school district to continually exist, we have to continue to operate in the format that we're operating in now. Unless the debt is miraculously paid, right? So, from now until 2042, 44, this is how we will operate. You will have, you will have this board acting as authorizers in order for the academy to exist. Because if we don't exist, the school district doesn't exist.
But don't you think that should be...
Ma'am, you have to wait. I'm, I'm trying, I'm trying to explain to you. Now, if...
You keep going.
So, so this is what, when, if you guys have questions, remember the question and you can come and ask us. But please just let me get it out because it's a lot, and we don't want to be here all night. So, until the debt is paid, this is how it has to exist. So, we started when, when after the emergency manager came in, and the first company came in was Mosaic, right? Mosaic was a for-profit organization that came into the district and tried to run the district, and it didn't survive, and it didn't operate right, and things went astray. That's, and, and they left. Then next, we had a self-managed model. And within that self-managed model, we had to have staffing agencies because the district cannot employ teachers themselves because of the, the Office of Retirement Services that you have to pay into when you're a public school employee and, and all the other obligations. We cannot afford, as a district, to take on all of those obligations. So, we have to operate in this entity. So, we had some troubles with those staffing agencies. And the boards at that time recognized that, and so, they left one staffing agency and went to another. Up until last year, we had MM1. There was a number of problems with MM1, and they saw fit that we needed to get a new, a new staffing agency. At that time, the PSA board sent out a request for a proposal, RFP, asking for new management companies. And during that RFP, it was two companies that responded to that RFP. It was New Paradigm for Education, and it was another management company. The district board had a committee, a selection committee, that did the interview process for those two management companies. On that selection committee, there was a representative from this board along with our compliance officer. There was two representatives from the PSA board, and there was a community member. And these individuals are who we entrusted to complete the interview process and to select that management company. And that's what they did. And the management company that they chose was New Paradigm for Education. And so, when New Paradigm for Education did come on board, it was really late. It was late, right? And I'm not gonna sit here and say, "They did everything right." I'm not gonna say they went through the interview process at a speedy process and they got things done because they couldn't, in my opinion, and some of my board members can attest to this, we would have liked for them to pick up that process. Because in the process, we did lose some teachers for whatever reason. I, I, I cannot say what reasons, specifically why teachers chose to leave and staff chose to leave, but at the end of the day, they left. They exited, right? And so, with all of that taking place, they were under time constraints to try to get things moving for this upcoming school year. And so, things got off to a rocky start. Still, things are still, still rocky according to some teachers, according to some parents. But the fact of the matter is, there's a national teacher shortage. There's a state teacher shortage. If you go onto the state website, the state even does a good job of breaking it down district by district with the shortage of teachers. And the reality of things is, is that with teachers, if you have a teacher that's looking for a job, they're gonna opt to go work for a public school district quicker than they will a charter school because the pay is better. And then you also have to take in consideration, I'm just gonna tell it like it is, you have to take in consideration that teachers are looking at the districts that they're going to work in. We are a very unique district. And a lot of people do not want to take on the challenge of coming to work here. That's the reality of it. So, with all of that being said, yep, we gonna ask Mr. Bland some tough questions tonight. That's what you all are here for. You all can ask us those tough questions. But I just ask in doing so, let's be respectful to one another. So, we can have some, some really good dialogue to try to come up with some really good solutions and trying to move this thing forward. We're not here to disrespect each other, to belittle any, anybody because at the end of the day, I'm gonna tell you, my board members, we sat on a meeting with the state of Michigan. And, and they told us that they didn't really believe that this community could be successful without them overseeing us. That's what they said on that meeting. So, we want to make sure that we can show them, even at the state level, that we can be successful in taking care of our business at hand. Because the most important thing is, is that our children deserve what they... They deserve to have every academic... Every academic thing to come to them. I get emotional talking about this. I, I kid you not. Because I've been in this fight a long time. So, we need to make sure that our kids are afforded their just due. We don't want our kids to be disrupted again as far as shaken up and, and trying to do all the things when they're the one who suffers. Adults can, we can sit back and we can gripe and bicker about everything, but at the end of the day, it's our babies who suffer. And we want to make sure when they go out there and they come see me in my profession that I can send them off to the work world and knowing they know how to read and fill out an application and do all the things that they supposed to do, right? So, as adults, let's just collectively come together and try to figure this thing out to move forward and do what's in the best interest of our students. At this time, I'm going to, um, let Mr. Bland talk about some of the things that New Paradigm is currently doing to address the teacher and staff shortages that we have going on right now. Because we want to be completely 100% transparent with you guys. So, Mr. Bland?
Good evening. So, uh, right now, last year, the district had between sixty-five and seventy, seventy percent certified teachers. When we came on board, and we came on board a little bit late, hadn't signed our contract, teachers had already gotten positions in other districts. We called those teachers to try to get an opportunity, make them an offer. They said, "No, I'm already committed." Right now, we have forty-seven percent certified teachers in the district. And last year, like I just mentioned, compared to sixty-five, sixty-five percent, seventy percent. Last year, the student count, on count day, was six hundred and fifty students. Uh, this year, we're hovering closer to seven hundred students. Right about now, give or take a few. So, when we look at, and the, one of the issues in just in education in general, and I heard this guy say that, was a teacher shortage. But in addition to that, it's also a substitute teacher shortage. So, when a teacher at, is absent daily, then you can't find a substitute. We used to find a substitute to fill that spot. But now, you can't even find a substitute to fill that spot because all the substitutes are in long-term positions. So, that also, it, it stretches the staff. When you can't find substitutes to come in and fill that daily spot. In addition to that, it is challenging to get teachers to come to Muskegon Heights. We're moving aggressively. We've contracted with some special education services, but also, we're talking to Muskegon... but also we're talking to Muskegon Community College and trying to hopefully work with them also too. And we working with some other vendors also. So, it is a challenge. We've had teachers we were talking to and they said, hey, we just wanna sit back. We just wanna watch to see what happens. And, but, we're not, but we accepted the challenge. So, it's gonna be a long path. It's gonna be challenging. But we're up for the task. And with the community support, and with the community support, we can make it work. And that I know the community right now isn't happy. We're not happy. Because we can't implement the model that we want to implement to give the students the best quality education that we made the commitment to do. So, we're not happy either. But I need your support though. And I need your support in calling back the alumni, calling back alumni that has bachelor's degrees, that's interested in education, that can help become substitute teachers. That, all that helps. All that helps. But we can't do it alone though. It's gonna, it's gonna take the community effort. And I remember Mr. Childers said that last night, that it's gonna take, it's gonna take the community effort. I don't know if you have a question.
I got a question. Okay, Mr. Bland, the, the issue, the issue, one of the issues that I have is, I don't see any job description on the Muskegon Heights website. And not only that, not on ISD website because services don't, yeah, tho- those job descriptions of everything that you need should be on those websites. Because when they look for New Para- Paradigm, I mean, they're looking for New Paradigm. I mean, even though it may strictly say Muskegon Heights, Muskegon Heights is gonna look for Muskegon Heights.
And that's a, that's a good point. So, I did look at that and that we did have somebody call because something changed on the site. It wasn't on the site. And so, we did have somebody working on that to make sure it's Muskegon Heights on the site, not New Paradigm, separate from New Paradigm because we want the focus to be on Muskegon Heights. We are not trying to take over the school district. Uh, the management organization cannot take over a school district.
Let, let me, um, just so, I'm glad you, that's a key point, right? Because we know at the beginning, there was rumors floating around saying that New Paradigm was taking over the district. New Paradigm works for the PSA, okay? The PSA, we, the district board oversees the PSA board. The PSA oversees the management company. That's the chain of command. So, P, I, I want all stakeholders, community members, parents to understand, New Paradigm cannot, cannot take over Muskegon Heights. There's no changing of school colors. There's no getting rid of the tiger. None of that's happening. So, those rumors can be put to rest.
So, uh, did we, we came in, we came, we came in running. So, usually we like to come in a situation, walking, taking our time, looking at different things. But we came in running. We came like, a lot of things were real crucial and parallel. Trying to hire people, looking at the finances, looking at what ha- what's happening with the finances. The ISD, the finances with the ISD. Meeting with the ISD every Thursday and trying to get that back so the district can have control of the finances. Uh, also looking at the grants. The district has a lot of grants. So, we also, uh, mentioned what grants they had at the other meeting. Somebody told me that was the first time that that had ever been mentioned. That last year, that was never mentioned. And so, we're not trying to hide anything, but it's a lot going on simultaneously. Did we make some mistakes? We made some mistakes. We did. But the thing, but the thing about it is that we're continuing, continuing to go at it aggressively. We're not gonna be distracted, going to be distracted because we're here to educate students. And like, we're not, we're not satisfied with what we're doing now.
So, next on the, thank you, uh, Mr. Bland. Do we have any more questions for Mr. Bland from board members? Academy board members, any questions? Ms. Robinson, nothing? Mr. Childers? Okay, so at this time, um...
I would like to say...
Go ahead, sir.
So, a couple, one, a couple things. Curriculum. So, people have been talking about curriculum. Don't have curriculum. So, we have electronic curriculum and we also have hard copy curriculum. So, the process is, since the curriculum is expensive, the process is, is that when the curriculum comes in, it doesn't come in all at once. So, we gotta make sure all of us here, then we have thirty days to inventory the curriculum. Within that thirty days, if something is missing, then we can call the company back and they'll send it to us. But if we don't do it within that thirty day window, then we have to pay for it. So, it's important that we inventory it and then the teachers sign out the curriculum because they're responsible for it. So, during that whole process, students are getting assessed. Students that weren't in school continue to get assessed. And it is curriculum in the building. The high school curriculum is around the auditorium in a building locked up. The curriculum for Ed Word has been passed out already. The curriculum for MLK has been passed out, some of it. And then still students are being regrouped into their reading groups. Now, I know some, some, some people said that we gave used curriculum to one of the teachers. So, we did.
Yeah, we...
Because, be- because when we come into a situation and the t- a teacher does not have curriculum, then we get curriculum for them to use until we can get the new curriculum out for them.
Wait, wait a minute, wait, wait. This is, listen. I, I tried to set the groundwork. This is not what we're gonna do. We're gonna act as adults and we're not going to just, you guys will have the opportunity to ask questions. But now is not the time, right now.
So, over the summer, we sent the principals to training, reading training. Reading training was in Baltimore. At the reading training, the high school principal asked the reading trainers, is it possible we can get the curriculum at a lower level? Why do you want it at a lower level? Because I think that curriculum is too high, might be too high for our students.
Mr. Bland, let me, let me, so you all, as the public, and Ms. Johnson Pierce can attest to this because she's an educator sitting here. You all have access to what's called My School Data. And so, you go onto this website and it gives you all of the information where these children were the previous year, if they were proficient in reading, if they were proficient in math. So, let's be clear. This is something that, these scores were before New Paradigm. These scores were in the previous administrations. And so, that's one of the reasons why we decided we needed to do something different. Because some of our babies at third grade level didn't even score a score. They didn't score a score. When, when you're talking about third grade, fifth grade, if you look at the list, I'll, I'll, I'll wait. See, because this is important, because we need to, we need for you all to understand that these scores are not New Paradigm scores. Anytime... So, anytime a new school year begins, children are assessed. And they're assessed on the material that they learned the previous year. So, starting the fall, when assessments take place, the children are being tested on information that was learned the previous school year. And so, that's where New Paradigm and their team came in to assess the children. And they see where some of these children are ranking at and where they need to be. So, when you might have an eighth grader that is honestly reading at a fifth grade level, you might have a third grader who doesn't really even know how to identify certain words or say cer- that's the reality of it, you all. We might not like it, but that's where we are. And so, we know that at one point in time, New Paradigm for Education received Blue Ribbon Awards from the state of Michigan. Yep, it was a few years back. But the academic model that they have in place feel, we feel as if this model will help our children. And that's, that's our number one goal is academics. But we have to look at, we can't just look at what's happening right now. We have to look at what happened for us to get here. Like this, it, like honestly, this is the most people that I've seen in this boardroom since the financial takeover. So, anytime that there is a crisis, people come, right? But before that, nobody came. And this district board has worked tremendously hard to get to this point. We've entrusted, the board members that was at, that's at, sit at the academy level, we've entrusted them to do a job. And we want to allow them to do their job, but at the same time, we have to work together. We have to work together. Because that's the only way we're gonna be successful. I don't wanna get on a soapbox and start to talk about all of these systems that were put in place to keep us as a people oppressed, but we're, we're, we're doing it to ourselves right now. We're doing it to ourselves right now because we have enough people in the room to get to where we need to be. But we have to do it collectively and respectfully. That, that's it. I might not, you all might not agree with everything I say sitting up here tonight. And I can guarantee you, it's gonna be some people that walk away feeling that way. But, and that's okay. But there's no need to be disrespectful towards anyone. I mean, we have to unify ourselves in order for us to get to the next level. Our children are watching us. And they're the ones who's at stake. So, at this time, if we have, um, I'd like to, Mr. Bluff, you have a, you have anything? I'm sorry.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, sir.
They talked about us not being able to be a, a, a genuine, a genuine school district, until, well, I'll be ninety-something when that happens. But, but as long as we have all these cameras here, I'm gonna tell you, that's just wrong. That happened to every dime-sized district in the state of Michigan. So, managing a district with minority folks, especially, this is our fault. A large number of minority folks, a large number of residents who don't get out and vote.
Amen.
And then, then, then we have a recession. Property values fall. Every other industry in the city moves out. And suddenly, the high school that we built does not have, there's not enough SEB to support the high school. So, when people talk about the huge debt, part of that debt is that high school. And when people talk about the, uh, Muskegon Heights not supporting its schools, good God, you're paying the highest mileage you can pay. You're supporting. It's just that that money is not staying here. None of that money in interest, none of that money that built the school, none of it stayed in Muskegon Heights. It's all someplace else. So, I, I don't wanna wait till I'm ninety. I think every one of us, when you start going to the polls, the people that listen will start listening to us and say, it is not fair that a child growing up in Muskegon Heights is not funded and supported at the same level as a child growing up in surrounding districts. And the other thing I wanna say, or I may talk too much. Well, raise, if you quit listening, raise your hand. So, I believe in teachers. And I taught here for thirty years. I believe teachers are important. And I think they are, I, I very much believe that teachers outran curriculum. Because we've had lots and lots of curriculum. In fact, the, the prior board spent nine hundred, the prior, uh, academy, yes, spent nine hundred thousand dollars on curriculum. But for curriculum to work, you have to have a teacher to teach it. And you have got to have kids that come to school. One of the things that happens with, with the charter is they don't have the same grab as a public school does. So, many of our students are going someplace else. I think that our students are, I think they ought to get a lot of credit because I think some of them are overcoming situations that other people don't face. And I think sometimes they don't have the same amount of support. So, uh, those are two of those things. And then I'm gonna do a little confession. When I was a teacher, I was a negotiator, I was president of the union. We were on strike for three weeks and school down the, Muskegon was on strike at the same time. And the Muskegon strike brought on such discord. And, and there was animosity between the administration and the teachers for a long time after that strike was settled. In Muskegon Heights, then that would be John Sidmore, the, the superintendent. In Muskegon Heights, Board of Education never said a bad thing, an untrue thing, or half-truth about teachers. And the teachers never said a bad thing or half-truth about the Board of Education. And the reason we did that was we didn't think we could afford to be quarreling, uh, uh, bickering. Because the people on the outside, when they look at that, they don't care if you're right or wrong. They just think you're hard to get along with, you're bickering. So, um, there are a lot of people in this room that I love. And what I wanna tell you is, show that, show that love to each other. And think about it. If what you're saying is not gonna get us closer to where we need to be, then think about not saying it. I do have one other thing to say. And that's because I regret, but I got on, I'm on Facebook and then it's just taking up too much time and it's why I'm not getting stuff done. But this man right here, this is Kevin Smith. Now, I saw his picture on Facebook. Kevin Smith's a good man. Kevin Smith told this board things we didn't wanna hear. He said, when you come in charge, you cannot just kick everybody out. You have to have a plan. You have to have somebody who looks at the way you are handling money. So, we have somebody who is, he says that they're not overseeing us, but they're certainly informing us and watching us and helping to make sure we, we do things right. So, just like if somebody was to badmouth one of you and I had something, uh, and I was responsible for you, like if you're my student and somebody talked about your badmouthing was a lie and I feel like I had a step up. So, uh, if you did pay me a thing, say that.
Ms. Johnson Pierce, do you have anything?
It is, um, pleasing to look out and see so many faces because that tells me that you are concerned. Because that tells me that you are concerned. This board, and I speak for myself, I'm very concerned about the education for our students. I want the best for them. The primary goal of schools is to educate students. And because I am a teacher, and I have been a teacher for twenty-seven years, I am behind and I support teachers in the classroom. You are on the front line, and I know it. I face the very same issues on a daily basis. I want the same thing, but I'm dealing in facts. And when I hear rumors and untruths, it is so incredibly disappointing. Everyone would love for us to return to a regular public school. But as you've heard a couple of times tonight already, there's a debt that existed prior to 2022 that has to be repaid before this school district can return to a public school district. And the truth of the matter is, when you are considering employment, I understand when a teacher says, "I have to go work elsewhere" because that particular public school contributes to the Office of Retirement. And you get those years in credit and trust and believe. I want mine. So I understand. But we have to do everything that we can do to attract teachers and retain those teachers. Because those are the people that are going to educate our children. And again, the focus of schools is to educate students. And families, when you send your children to school, please, I implore you to send them with respect for adults and each other. And I think that's about the summary of what I have to say right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson Pierce. Ms. Selman?
Yeah, I wanna say something. Good afternoon, good evening, everybody. Well, I just wanna say that when I found out that this, the school was gonna close, if we had not had a board like this. And I, I contemplated in my mind, what should I do? Because I was already busy. And I didn't know a lot about a school board. I knew about other boards, but not a school board. So I prayed on this. Because I love Muskegon Heights. And I love the kids that go to Muskegon Heights. And I love the people that live in Muskegon Heights. I said, "Lord, I'm, I'm just gonna go up there and try to get on the board." And I put my application in. Then they told me they needed two more people. They said, "Ms. Peggy, if we don't get two more people, we will not have a school." And I said, "What can I do?" I said, "Oh, my goodness, who can I get?" The first person I thought was my sister. And I know she was gonna say her little bad word, "No." And she did. But I had to tell her off. I mean, I literally, we got into a big argument. But this is all I know of Muskegon Heights. Even my business is in Muskegon Heights. My aunt told me, "You're not going downtown and open up no foster care home. You're gonna be right here in the Heights." And that's what I did. She, my sister finally said, "Yes." Then we needed another person. I begged Marjorie Cook. I had to ask her, because I had to ask her to be with, uh, Muskegon, uh, Health down there. And they fired her, because she was black. And I'm saying, and I'm loud, and everybody can hear me, and it's probably down there. Yeah, they fired, was Health, what is it called? Health West, yes, Health West. They fired her. She knew what she was doing, but they let her go. So she, I had to beg her and beg her and beg her, you know, and she did. And that's why we're on this board, because we want it to work. I think we can make it work. But it takes us doing it together. And just forget about everybody else and let's do it, but we can't say, "I'm ready to knock on doors." I keep telling the board, "I'm ready to knock on doors." I had as many ready as we're to do it. All the board members say, "Hey, on the, on this board." They say they want to knock on those doors. And I told the board, I said, "They need to get off." Because I'm ready, I'm ready to make it work. We can make it work, they can be dynamite. We can make something out of this. But we have to stick together. Just say if you don't like it, and they don't be killed if you don't like it, but we still gonna work together. So we need to do it, and we can do it, you all, we can do this. We had it high when we was growing up. We ain't gonna let it go. Just because some people over in Lansing say we can't do it. That's it, we can't do it. Can we do it? What do you mean?
She just said, "Board members wouldn't knock on doors," he was talking about.
What do you mean?
This board.
No.
That's what I meant.
I said, "The previous board." You're only the other board, is that what you're saying?
I meant, that's what I meant.
I just said, "The previous board."
Yeah, so, so when do, when do we get to make that?
It ain't time yet.
There'll be an opportunity, but we're doing things all in decent and in good order. No one said anything negative. Absolutely not.
I heard people are lying, I've heard multiple things directed toward our board. I just wanna know where we get to.
Well, what I said, I, I heard falsehoods and idealism.
So at this time, um... They will have their turn to talk, right? So this is, I'm going to control this, okay? I, I, when, when I opened up, I said we were gonna treat everybody with respect. Mr. Fox, you wasn't in here then, you, you came in late. And so everybody's gonna have the opportunity, the PSA board, will have an opportunity to speak. But right now, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna change the, the, uh, the energy in the room right now, okay? Because this is something that we wanted to do as the pub, as the Public School Board, to make this a positive thing. Because at the end of the day, we are the authorizers. And we are held responsible for what happens at the, at the academy level. At this time, Mr. Smith, do you have anything to add?
Thank you. I don't have anything to add. I think you guys are, are saying the right things. And it is important, I've seen this a few times now, that this community sticks together. There are a lot of issues. You have to listen to each other and understand the issue. What I, what I will say is, your budget and education go hand in hand. You have to make sure that you do not run your budget up under the new model. So your decisions that you're making have to be consistent with what you can afford.
Excuse me, Kevin. Um, could you say your name and who you are? Because they don't know who you are, she just said.
Oh, Kevin Smith, I thought she said.
Attorney.
Yeah, Kevin Smith, so I'm, if I, I'm counsel to the board.
Mr. Board Attorney.
Attorney for the board.
District Board Attorney.
That's okay, I apologize, okay?
Some of the things that's being proposed, uh, you guys have to have to gain some understanding about, because you won't be able to do it. The state, there are existing orders that Mr. Witherspoon, uh, and the state treasury all put in place. And I think, uh, President Scott described it. It says, "You have to conduct yourself as a charter district." One of the reasons that, and again, no one on this board voted for any structure. What happened was, this board said, "We don't like what we see right now." You had a self-directed structure with people who were already reporting to the board. The board had a superintendent, assistant superintendent, a CFO. They were paying pensions. And that group shut the community out. That group shut this board out. So this board called me and said, "We wanna fight to get our right to run the district again." That's what they did. We then entered into negotiation and established that this board had done all the things they were supposed to do. And that they deserved the right to manage their own school district, you all do. The reason this is important, let me just say this. I know people are trying to say, "I'm their emergency manager," all those different things. Let me tell you why this is important. Because the emergency manager laws were not written for the state to permanently occupy communities. It's to stabilize them and then get out of the way and get your hands off. The state is not coming to rescue you. Your ISD is not coming to rescue you. The state constitution was designed so that local communities can provide for their own education. And our argument was, you've been here for ten years. Take your hands off, it's time to let go. And give this board an opportunity to govern its own school district. And if they make mistakes, guess what happens? You, the people, hold them accountable because they're your elected officials. That's the way government is set up. Now let's be clear. The academy board does not have any real authority outside of what this board delegates. Charter schools are creations of the state, they're contractual in nature. What that means is, at any point that this board decides they don't like what the academy board is doing, they can get rid of that board. This board is ultimately who's held accountable. And guess who holds this board accountable? You do. That's the way government is supposed to work. That board is not accountable. This board is accountable. And if you guys don't like how this board is accountable, you show it in your votes. Right? So the goal is to make sure that this board has a voice, because they represent you. And so the goal is to make sure that what we don't do is go back to the structure where we had before, where the academy board does not listen and hear the concerns of this board. That's what you had before. That academy board didn't provide any reports. That academy board didn't call us back. That academy board didn't give you any answers, because they didn't feel like they had to. As long as they had the state covering them, they felt like, "We don't need to be accountable to this board," which means they didn't need to be accountable to you. And so this board went, fought long and hard to say, "Give us a right to be back in control, and we're gonna appoint people who are from our community and who we trust." So the most important thing here is that this board has to be able to trust all of you to represent them and be an extension of them. That's what we're working on. So this is why we're together today, because we need this board to work in tandem with this board who's entrusting in them and delegating their authority. The ultimate authority under the state constitution is this board. Because this board is accountable to you. So that's our law.
So at this time, we're going to allow the PSA board members to have, it was coming, you know, it, it's, I'm, I'm following the format. There was no way we would ask them to come to a meeting and, and, and not let them have their just do and let them talk. That's not how this works. Um, so at this time, we're going to yield the microphone over to, um, the PSA, um, academy board members. I ask that you all, um, the public, let them say what they need to say and let them get out what they need to get out of. They have questions for Mr. Bland, let Mr. Bland, Kevin, myself, whoever answer. But we're gonna give them their time and their opportunity to ask what questions they need and they want to ask. Um, I don't know how you all want to start, but, um, um, Ms. Selman. Yeah, they can take that microphone. It's on, oh, well, David, you can use that one right there if you want to, um. I think it, it might come on.
Uh, yeah, I'm...
And you can, you can, you can take it out, David, so you can...
I don't, I don't need to take it out. What year were you at Blue Ribbon School? Uh, this is for Mr. Bland.
I can't remember exactly.
Yeah, it, it's on the website, but it was a Blue, y'all were Blue Ribbon School before New Paradigm took it over. Right? The school that we're talking about, Detroit Edison?
So in actuality, Detroit Edison was ran, uh, it wasn't a charter school at first. And I was the, I was the superintendent when they were Blue Ribbon School.
So does New Paradigm have any Blue Ribbon Schools?
So, Mr. Bland...
We're, we're talking about New Paradigm, Mr. Smith. So, so we're being, we were told that New Paradigm had Blue Ribbon Schools. We just found out that they don't today, right? Okay? And we were told that without this board, no, we were told, we came onto the board that the decisions that happen on the school will fall on us, right? Our board would agree to that? We were just told tonight that that's different. That's what you just said. He said, he said...
Let me explain to you, so you be clear. You are accountable for your decisions to this board ultimately. That doesn't change.
And you said we can be removed. If they, if they don't like what we doing, we can be removed.
Yes, sir.
What, what have we done that they don't like? So why are you talking about being removed?
Because you can't.
Why is it, why is it being brought up?
Well, because that's important to know. It's important to know. And let me tell you why it's important to know. Because we want you to conduct yourself in a collaborative way where you consider what they want.
So before this, there was, there was no conversation before this, after that, last meeting, last work session, whatever we had last week, there was none of this, right?
What do you, what do you mean?
We, we, we haven't had a joint meeting with you guys in months. But after that last meeting we had, we got this letter. And then y'all had an emergency meeting the next night. And then we, and then we saying that it was said not on us. But we came in, they said, "Anything that happens, it falls on the academy board." So...
David, let's, let, no, let's, let's be clear. That's not, that, you're, you're misinterpreting what he's saying. That's not, that's not what we're saying. We're saying that you all, can you, no. What we're gonna have is, if, you all have to listen. So this is, this the problem. People only hear what they wanna hear. That's the problem. That's the problem. People hear what they wanna hear. If you guys take the time to listen, just hear what we're saying. We, so, we handpicked, we handpicked these academy board members. Because we trusting the fact that you all can do what we charge you all to do, which is manage the management company. If we did not trust you all, we would not have selected you all. Listen, um, ma'am, this, this is not what we're gonna have. But, but what I'm trying to get, but, but this is what I'm trying to tell you all. David, we, we handpicked, right? I called you, how many times?
Right, we, we're talking about what I'm talking about right now.
Exactly, but what I'm saying is, and this is what I'm saying. I'm saying to you all, we're trusting you all to do a job.
So, so what I'm saying is, I'm addressing, I'm addressing what's going on right now. We say in this letter, we are aware some of the current concerns were raised by rumors or assumptions. So y'all telling us, all teachers coming up here with all these facts, all these emails we showed y'all are rumors and assumptions?
We already addressed that, David. We, we're not talking about the stuff that's coming from staff.
This is in the letter that you wrote us.
I read that letter out loud.
I'm saying, so I'm addressing it.
You wasn't here.
So I can't address it?
You can't, but we've addressed it. So, so, I'm, I'm, so what, what do you wanna know? What do you...
I wanna know why you're saying what we came to you with are rumors and assumptions when we have facts from teachers, from us emailing New Paradigm, with him not responding to us? So, so how were, how were these rumors and assumptions, for one? This is the first paragraph of the letter.
Some things have their rumors, David.
No, 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 what has been rumors? Because we, we came, we came to y'all with facts in black and white. This is, this is what I'm saying. We came to y'all with facts, not, not y'all, but, but y'all. Not, no, not y'all, but y'all. But, and then, one of my board members, this is his first time seeing the letter. Um, so, it, it's multiple things in this letter where it says, uh, basically, "Do your job or we will, we will remove you." So it had to be some conversation about removing this board, Mr. Smith. Okay, so you just said it wasn't before that, this is my problem. Man, you, y'all, y'all ain't doing it.
Let me be clear.
Not tonight.
I did not say that you are going to be removed. I am saying that the board, you gotta hear me.
I don't wanna hear no more.
Well then, this is why we're saying it's a problem. Well, then, this is why we're saying it's a problem. If you're on the board and you don't want to hear, then you are a judge.
I don't have to listen to you.
No, you don't.
You, you just contradicted yourself twice. You contradicted yourself twice.
Let me be clear. Let me make it clear again. This board has not made a decision on you. But they are saying you gotta listen.
Not to you.
No, no, you're right. Absolutely.
But what I'm saying is, you contradicted yourself, and we got a whole crowd right here that heard it.
Let me make it clear so that it's no contradiction. So in case there's any clarification, you are accountable to this board. Is there any misunderstanding on that part?
Can we address the letter? Is, is, is a lot of misunderstanding on this letter. Can we address it?
Absolutely.
Okay, so the first thing, the rumors and assumptions, where are the rumors and assumptions that you're talking about in this letter?
Do you want to speak on those?
The, the...
One of them was the colors.
Colors of the school? We haven't talked about that in a month.
But, but we had, but it was a rumor.
It came from, who'd that come from?
It didn't come from the board?
We didn't say...
Let's be real here. It didn't come from the board.
We never said it came from you all.
This letter was addressed to the board, Miss Scott.
But it was addressed to you all, David, because we're addressing everything at hand. We're not saying that it came from you, David. We're not saying that the rumors came from you. That's not, you, you guys read the letter with the wrong intent.
So my question would be, if, if these aren't directed toward us, why couldn't this just be a regular meeting with you guys? Why, why are we here?
Because we want to try to solve the problem with New Paradigm and come to, oh...
So before last, last week's meeting, y'all knew, y'all didn't know about the problems that we had in that school? Before last week's meeting? Before everything blew up with the news? Y'all didn't know about that, the problems? Y'all didn't know about them problems?
We knew about the problem, right?
So why, why haven't we had a joint meeting before this?
We have had a joint meeting.
We had one joint meeting. It didn't discuss none of these issues.
Because that, these issues hadn't arose at that particular time.
We hadn't had a special ed teacher. We hadn't had a counselor. We hadn't had curriculum. You could ask this.
No, I, I said, I said I wasn't aware of some of the things that you are bringing. You can't tell me what I was aware of. I am telling you that there are some things that you are mentioning that did not come across to me. So I have a district email address. And so some of the things that you are mentioning right now, I have not.
What about, what about the closed sessions that we had? When we talked about it in closed sessions?
But, but sessions are closed sessions.
But, no, I'm saying the information that we gave to you, some of this information, so you're saying you didn't receive it?
I, what I'm saying is, there are some...
You weren't in the closed session, Marlene. I'm not talking about you. I'm talking about the people that were in the closed sessions that got some of this information that I'm speaking of.
What I'm saying to you, that some of the information that you are referring to, special ed teachers, what you brought up a moment ago, that has not come across to me. I have not. And I, I repeat, I have not received an email with any of that.
But Ms. Johnson Pierce...
Not from the PSA board. That has not, I have not received that. And I'm just not going to go back and forth with that. It's not necessary to do that.
Well, this is, this is what, David, the intent, the intent of this meeting was to bring community together, the PSA board together, to try to deal with all of these problems, right? That was the intent. But right now, what we're doing, it's, it's, it's not, we're showing division. It, it's not... If we did not trust you all, David, Marquise, Leslie, and Anthony, if we did not trust you all, we would not have, and Joe, we would not have put, we would not have put you all in this position. So, this is the thing. If we do not come to some order, I promise you, the meeting will be done. The meeting will be done. No, Miss, because, look. So, Mr., Miss, Mr., we're going to yield the floor to Mr. Warren at this time. It's gonna come back, David, okay?
I just want to say, uh, something to the, to the letter.
Is it on that, is it on Mr. Warren? Here.
But the letter that was sent, I kind of felt offended by that because it was geared toward us as a board. And when I looked at all of you guys' signatures on it, I know that we have done the things that, the decisions that we made as a board. I think we've done our best to do the right thing for the children of Meskeen Heights Public School Academy system. But when I received that letter, I was kind of insulted. I've been doing this volunteer service for Meskeen Heights for forty-four years. And to receive something like that, it's kind of, it's, it's kind of hurting. Because you guys chose me. And I, like you said, Miss Scott, if you didn't believe that we could do the job, you wouldn't have chosen us. Now, back to what you were saying, Mr. Smith. The charter language do states that the Meskeen Heights Public, Meskeen Heights Public School Board Academy should oversee the day-to-day operations of the school, right? So with that being said, if we oversee the day-to-day operations, this blatantly in that book right there, that the, the, things that we should report back to this, this board here. I know the charter language of the, of the academy. That was in the letter that we need to learn and understand the charter language. I know the charter language. I was a part of when Don Tigonelli, Don Wetherspoon, and Elena Zachary Ross came in, and Don Wetherspoon wrote that charter language. I can't speak for the rest of the board. I've sat on other boards. And I have not done anything unprofessional, to my knowledge. But I have been told by this board at one point that I need to, I have to stay professional. Now, Miss Scott, and I ain't trying to criticize you. I'm saying as a friend, I think we need to take that and use that advice. And I ain't saying that, I don't even mean, I'm saying that because Miss Scott have been, she have been good to me. And some things that I've seen in our meetings that need to be addressed. And I wouldn't say that, I, I have been wanting to talk to you about it, but sometimes we get in, in a position where we, we let ourselves go. But we have to, we all have to do better. But with New Paradigm, my fight is for the staff and the students. And, and that letter didn't address anything to, to New Paradigm. And when I said yesterday, when I went in that school and I saw how those kids was fighting, it was hurting to me as a graduate of Meskeen Heights. That's not the way we act. But how do we get this together when everybody from the Paradigm is in Detroit? The letter is geared toward the board. It's like, we, we, we gotta take the blame for what they not doing. You talking about, and I'm just going to be honest, Mr. Bland, you sit there and, and you, you weren't truthful last night. There was a lot of things that you said that just wasn't truthful. And this board is telling us that we gotta be truthful, transparent, and honest. They asked you some questions last night about insurance for staff. And the staff person said you didn't give it to them. They asked you about, um, what, there were a couple other things they asked you.
Curriculum.
No, it wasn't curriculum. And, and, and you were, they, they all, they wasn't true. So, and I ain't trying to cause conflict or controversy with this, between the two boards. I'm just saying if the, if the management company and this attorney that we had can't be honest with us, there would never be... The attorney wasn't even honest with us. But we have to sit here and take the blame, it seemed like, for some, for some people that, that's doing our children wrong. We gotta, we can't, we cannot, we cannot fault our, we have been too many times allowing outsiders to come here and defy us.
So, Ms. Robinson, you have anything?
I do. I...
Get that microphone, Miss Warren.
I'm not going to keep on saying how hurtful this is. Because all of this time is being taken up for people's egos and power trips and things like that. And it's so hurtful, and I mean this with all due respect. Miss Scott, you come in our meetings and you're disruptive. You bring your family to attack the very people that you're sitting here to serve, and that's not fair. Our, our students see this. Our community sees this. And then we have to, we understand the hierarchy of this, each board. We've had training. We, we understand it. We want, I know you all want us to know the power that we have in running this school. And we know the power that you have in sitting where you are. And we need you all.
So I'm going to address the fact when you say attacked. So this is the thing. I've been attacked on Facebook. The problem. Are you sat in this where I was attacked and you saw that? And when you say, "Bring my family," I bring my family for protection. I got people following me, videotaping me, all of the things, Anthony. I got it, I got it on camera, Ms. Robinson. It's, it's all true. So when you say that, I've sat, I've sat in this seat. And I've dealt with, I've dealt with all of the things. I've dealt with all of the things, Ms. Robinson. You've seen me get verbally attacked. You've seen it.
Those are words, Miss Scott.
Exactly. That's, and so, but when you have people riding past your home, you have people following you, you have people doing all the things. I'm a woman. I, I travel for my job by myself. And people, I don't know what somebody's going to do to me. And so, of course, my family's going to say they're going to come with me. I've never experienced this, and I've been on this board since 2010. I've never experienced anything like this. I've never experienced anything like this. But this isn't the time or place for that and for this conversation.
Yeah. I just want to address it because in the letter that... And I hope I can speak on behalf because I understand the same thing. But when we get a letter that, that directs us to, you know, people want to be treated fairly, honest, honesty, honestly and with respect. And when we use words like, you know, we lack experience in this, or, you know, needing help in that, I don't, I don't think that's a conversation for, you know, something like this to be addressed to us in a letter where we feel like we are not doing our job. I mean, we know these problems didn't arise overnight, but in some of these things, it's not us. These things are, are, are not us. I think we are working very hard, but I think one of the problems that I want to, um, address is that some things, and I asked Mr. Bland in our, uh, work session, if, who does he talk to? Because it is unfair for us to not be in the final decision-making or even aware of some of the things that are being handed down that are not coming across the board table for our approval and being put into effect. So when I ask that, I'm wondering who he is talking to that is making these decisions that are giving him the go-ahead to do some of these things.
It doesn't come from us. It doesn't come from us.
I asked Mr. Bland and never got an answer.
Because...
They shut me down, and I need to hear answers. I ain't heard one answer from last night, period. We got to have lots of answers. We need answers.
So, Ms. Robinson, just to be completely transparent, we, this board, give no direction to Mr. Bland. We don't tell him to make any decisions.
Then that tells me he's making them on his own.
It, it's not, so, that could be true, right? And so you, 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 that, that's a huge problem if it's not coming to you all as a board.
That's a problem.
That's a huge problem. We, we will get that talk, we can get those answers right now. Because it's not, let it be clear. It's not coming from here, okay? We don't want you all to think we're trying to micromanage the, the deal that you all have with Mr. Bland. We're not doing that. So, Mr. Bland, can you speak directly to Ms. Robinson's question?
That our management agreement spells out that we have different, we have, we have leverage in the management agreement to make different decisions. Now, we don't have a problem with talking and discussing to the board. We came in so fast with a lot of different things that we were trying to attack. We haven't even gotten to the physical or the physical part of the buildings throughout the district. So, we can, we can come together and we can, and we can do that. We can do that. I'm saying that.
Ms. Robinson. So, Ms. Robinson, can you tell me, can you, can you tell us what, like, something specifically? Just so he can make sure he answers your question, please.
There's a long list. I'm going to go all the way back to how come we weren't notified or spoken with about where training would be for our staff. Going forward, I'm talking about things that have been ordered. We have, that, that's one thing about this oversight with the finances that we're going back and forth for. We have no idea what has been spent by us so far. If that approval that he has spent money has not happened, that's what I mean by things that are happening without our approval.
So... So when we came in... So when we came to the district, it was not a process to, it was not a process to get, to order things or to get things done. We kept asking or trying to get it from the prior administration, what is the process, what is the process? And we kept asking the financial business manager, the prior one, who was asking the ISD, what is the process? So it wasn't a process. And then what happened is that a large check, a large check was written and wrote and given to the ISD. And that was by the prior administrator. And we said, "That shouldn't, that shouldn't have happened." And in addition to that, we're trying to put a process in place where the board does look at the invoices and the checks. And the CFO has met with President Slater and also Mr. Fox about the process. Because we want them to look at that.
Is that true, Mr. Warren?
What was your question? I'm sorry. I missed it. Was what true?
Well, he, because he, he explained the process that, that was from the previous administration. He, he explained all of that. And so, I'm asking, and he said he talked to you, Ms. Kitchen Slater, and you, Mr. Fox.
So, so prior to them, the previous administration, we weren't aware of things that were being spent until we got to our board meeting and they ran it down. So they were doing spending. So, they were doing spending, um, without us, um, without our foreknowledge. So, at the end, you were. So, um, what he's talking about with that large check that went out to the ISD, we had instructed our administration not to send out that check until we were able to figure out if the ISD had actually rendered those services that they were billing us for. However, they sent it out anyway. Because at that time, there was no process in place, um, for, they had it where they signed checks. It's now, um, the process now is that no check is, or invoice is paid unless it is reviewed by our treasurer or myself. So, no, no expenditure can be made, um, until either David or I sign that check. So, that's the process now. It was not that way previous. And I don't know, before, I don't know who set that up, 'cause that was in place before I was on the board. So, I don't know who set that process up, but I do know that now it cannot happen. They cannot spend anything unless David or I have signed that check.
I, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
At that point, when you and David do all of this, is the rest of the board informed? Because you have to, you, 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 you see what I'm saying? You gotta inform the rest of the board, because Anton is saying that this is not happening, but it's okay, because David is the treasurer and you're the president, and that's okay. Y'all, the two of you should be doing that. But the rest of the board has got to be informed of what's going on.
When he makes this, but, when he makes his treasurer report and those expenditures are provided, when we have our board packet, to, um, the rest of the board. So, um, David review, I review the invoices, he reviews, um, the invoices.
So, at the end of the month, Ms. Kitchen Slater, do you all receive, uh-
We have not had a financial report as of yet. We just signed a first batch of checks. Let me sign one.
Okay, so, I think moving forward, you all should ask for what's called the check registry, right?
I, I actually had the first one.
You did? Okay, so, Mr. Bland, that's something that needs to take place, and they should have that at the, at the month end of every report. They should have a check registry. Yes, sir.
I just wanna ask, 'cause again, this is a communication piece. If you're listening to, uh, Antoinette, what she's saying, she didn't know, and there's two board members that do know, so you guys communicating with each other.
To say that we signed checks?
Did you let Antoinette know that the process was in place?
Well, we, well, what we, look, this is, I'm, I'm the treasurer of this board. And what I have each, each month is, I got the, the face sheet of what the bank, what's in the bank and what the bank gives us. I make sure that, 'cause I wanna make sure that everything that's in that check, check registry is balanced with that balance in the bank. I mean, that's what we do here. So, that, you know, that's something that needs to be-
And, and, all right, then, Mr. Warren, you can have the floor, but what has to happen is your board members have to have the check registry before the month end, so they can go over what has went out and, and how much, like, Ms. Rankin get those before I get them, but she makes sure that all of us have what we need to have before we go into that meeting and we know how much money we have and where the money is at. So, that's a process that needs to be put in place as far, David said he asked Ms. Hodges for it at the very beginning, and that's something that should be happening, um, in order for them to accurately keep track of the finances. You did, you said you asked Ms. Hodges for that, right? So, we, we need to, we need to circle back, and you all need to, or that Ms. Hodges understand that we need this information and we need it by X amount of date. And I think what Ms. Robinson is saying, that, um, Ms. Kitchen Slater, when you and Mr. Fox have those meetings, um, to go over what's, all of the things, they should be informed by, whether it's email or whatever, saying that thus, thus, and this has taken place, and you can check the bottom line when the check registry comes on this day. So, that's a process, Mr. Bland, with, 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 with the finances that needs to be worked out. Um, so they can have better clarity of what's, what's going on with the money from the Academy, and because at the end of the day, when we get the reports and we look at it and we have questions, they wanna be able to a- answer the questions that we have.
How much money is spent? So far, you got a rough estimation? I don't, I don't have a- I- Uh, the CFO has, has that, and in addition, I just wanna make a comment that, uh, Ms. Hodges has been working on cleaning up the latest financials from the information from the ISD. And she's been trying to clean that up, so she can get, uh, the board financial report.
Can I speak now? So, why hasn't she called me to meet with me about that?
She sent us an email about, I know, that's what I'm saying, for both of us.
So-
Oh, but here, here is the problem.
So, go ahead, Mr. Warren.
Prior to New Paradigm coming, there was a process. Prior to New Paradigm coming, there was a process. If y'all recall, I kept complaining about the corrective action plan. That corrective action plan was a part of the finance, how money would be spent. The money was supposed to have been approved by the superintendent, the assistant superintendent, and the business manager. That's how they set the corrective action plan up, along with a person from the ISD. Now, I asked just last week the business manager for a finance report. She was gonna give it to me until she talked to Paris Hodges. Paris Hodges said, "Don't give it to him. Tell him to call me, and then I'll explain to him why we can't give it to him." But we haven't received any financial information or documents since they've been on the board. I understand, but I'm just saying, there was a process, and, and, and even that a process, we still haven't received any financials since New Paradigm came aboard, and we've been asked.
So, we want Mr. Bland to answer. I also wanna ask Marlene, 'cause this is a compliance issue. One of the, now, now, I hear you, I hear you. What, one of the things that Marlene is saying, when she says we need the board to approve, right, the financial processes, 'cause what we're saying to your management and you is reduce it to writing, right? Present it to the board, so you all know it, and then you guys vote on it, and then it's approved, and then everyone has an understanding of the process.
Marlene?
So, Mr.-
Marlene knew about this.
Mr. Warren, um, let Mr. Bland respond to that comment.
So, when MM1 came on board for the district, they didn't have a financial person, and that financial, financial person didn't come on to January. And that financial person that they brought on wasn't very astute to the financial and the state accounting system. So, when we started meeting with the ISD weekly when we came on board, and we found out that she wasn't very astute to the state accounting system, so we started asking the ISD a lot of questions about what about this and what about that. And so, that's part of the delay on the financials, is trying to get a good, clean financial statement to give to the PSA board.
Just, just a moment. Mr. Childers.
So, what he asked-
Mr. Childers, get the microphone.
So, if I'm not mistaken, do you think, what he just said, do you think that's productive if he goes to the ISD and ISD says, "No"? Or, let me get that right. Do you think that he has to ask Ms. Hodges? That's though, 'cause I think that was one of the things he was trying to get to, and then you went to the backstory.
Well, I think the backstory was important, because MM1 did not have a good financial person supporting the district at all. So, she's trying to get together some clean financials. So, Ms. Hodges is not here, but I'm gonna assume she, she was gonna tell you that she wants to get prepared, wants her month to prepare, 'cause I've talked about it, like, whenever we're gonna get some financials to the board, and she said that, "I'm trying to clean them up and reconcile, but I can't get the information, 'cause MM1, they just, they just didn't do what they, they should've been doing."
No. No, can I, can I speak to that?
Yes.
So, here's why I'm saying, and I apologize to interject, but the reason I'm doing that is 'cause before Mr. Bland arrived, we had some knowledge, before we put all you on the board. The reason the board appointed you is for a lot of things that we discovered. First of all, MM1 was not responsible for having a financial person. The board directly employed five people. They employed a superintendent directly, an assistant superintendent, and the CFO. When Renee Garcia left, the CFO also left. What they're saying is that your board, your predecessors operated, they didn't have meetings. You guys remember that? There were no meetings. So, they were spending money without getting board approval, without the board seeing anything, and you didn't have a budget. Hear me, hear me. When, when this board regained control, and Mr. Warren, you were part of these conversations, you remember this, they couldn't present a budget as of January. The budget that was approved in July. So, what, part of the challenge is, they have to go back and recreate from information that they don't have. And so, MM1 was not responsible, I just wanna clarify, MM1 was not responsible. They were a staffing company, and their responsibility was to pay teachers. They didn't manage teachers, they didn't make any, their responsibility was to pay teachers. And that's part of the challenge, because MM1 was frustrated, because they were getting sued, and they're saying, "We aren't making decisions. We're just a payroll, we're just a staffing company." And they, you guys had direct management, and so, the decisions were being made by the direct employees. And when they left, they took all the books and things with them, and so, you don't have any. So, part of your challenge, which is really a tough one, that's what we want people to understand. They gotta go back and recreate their checkbook to, like, figure out what it is. So, part of the reason that I assume, Mr. Bland, you need to speak to this, if you're not giving it to them, is it because you wanna make sure you reconcile your checkbook before you hand it over?
Because he should say that.
I understand, I'm just, but I'm dealing with the fact.
That should've been said to us. If there's anything that needs to be reconciled, or there's anything that needs to be put together, Ms. Hodges should've said, "Look, come and let me show you what I'm trying to clean up."
The ask was, "Why isn't Ms. Hodges available to give that to Joe?" It has nothing to do with MM1, it has nothing to do with previous history. We're talking about when Joe asked for a report from Ms. Hodges, why couldn't we get the report from Ms. Hodges? That was the question that was asked. So, can we get an answer to that question?
Okay, I did answer that question. That she's cleaning up the financials. What, she's cleaning up the financials, so that's why she said, "Can you have a call, can you have him call me?" Because you all haven't been receiving that check register, financials, I mean, anything.
So, do you agree that anything that you would spend, it should be reported on that?
Yeah, we got, we are gonna report it.
So, Joe should've been able to get that when he went to the school, right?
So, that's why I'm going back to Yoman.
No, Ms. Yoman is pretty, pretty new.
And Ms. Yoman said, "Talk to Ms. Hodges." And Ms. Hodges would tell him, 'cause she's cleaning up the financials, 'cause the person for MM1 doesn't even have the knowledge to, to help us put together the, the financials.
I'm talking about the financials that New Paradigm has spent since you became the management company from Skegahikes. That has nothing to do with MM1. The financials that you spent since you got here should be available for us to have, and I, I agree with that. I agree with that. But, but you were, but you was asking for the financials. What financials were you asking for?
Mr. Bland, listen, listen, please, you all. If we are to come to any type of agreement and any understanding when we leave here, we have to have some order. It's, the dialogue is good, don't get me wrong. Because there, there are some processes that need to be put in place. That, we, we see that now. And that's one of the reasons why we, we saw the concerns, we heard you all. But we need order, in order for this thing to work, we have to have order. Let's, we were doing good. We were doing real good. I mean, I took some hard hits, you know, sitting here, but we, we were doing, we're doing good, so let's continue to move forward, okay? So, okay, okay, so, if, if I can have you all just come down a little bit, please, and thank you. Just please and thank you, and listen to Mr. Bland, and let's have this dialogue, okay?
Answer the question.
Mr. Bland. Mr. Mr. Warren, did you have something else?
The finances from the lab, still, we still didn't get the answer, we still, I'm sorry.
So, oh, no, you, you don't have to apologize. So, so here's the thing, right? We've, we've uncovered what, 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 what you- Can, 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 can we, can, let's, let's do, please. So, we've uncovered some things, Mr. Fox. With this, with this financial, I'm, I'm almost ready to say it's a crisis, because there's no way that they should not have had, Mr. Bland, a financial report. And so, just, I, just give me one second, Mr. Warren. So, moving forward, before we leave here, we are going to need, this board is gonna vote on a corrective action plan for you all to get some things together. Because there's a communication gap. There are some things that's not happening that should be happening as far as the management company goes and the PSA board. Because what we're not trying to do, Mr. Warren, Ms. Robinson, Ms. Kitchen Slater, Mr. Childers, we're not trying to, Mr. Fox, I apologize, I'm sorry. It, it wasn't intentional. 'Cause, no, it wasn't intentional, 'cause I sought you out, right? So, we are not trying to micromanage you all in no kind of way. But we want to, we want to be unified in this process. David's not gonna agree with everything Ms. Scott says and all the things, but we have to do it respectfully. But you all have to come to, you all have to have some transparency, and some processes have to be put in place, like quick, fast, in a hurry. So, what this board is going to do, what this board is going to do, we are going to give you all a timeline. Ms. Williams have been on you guys about these compliance issues simply because the state is on us about being compliant. So, you all have to have, okay, I got you, Mr. Fox. You all have to have your ducks in a row, and all those things worked out. So, so, I'm gonna let Mr. Warren say what he needs to say, and then, Mr. Fox, you-
We can, me, me, well, Mr. Childers did kinda have something.
Okay.
So, I would like to just say my-
I didn't see your piece, I'm sorry.
And be done with, 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 with my comments. So, what I do know in terms of the financials, is that the last batch, the first batch of checks that David and I signed was from previous, um, from the previous administration, like with the billboard, um, it was some payroll, um, stuff in there, so it wasn't anything that they incurred. We now have another batch of checks that we need to go and sign, um, and review those invoices. So, just wanted to let that be known as, as it relates to that. Um, I did talk to Ms. Hodges, and I went up there about providing, you know, 'cause we should have it at every board meeting, our, a financial report. And so, the last-